All right, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of March 18th, 2015. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, please be sure to pick up a parking coupon for free parking. They're right up here on the podium if you want to pick one up on your way out. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. Please note, on March 4th, 2015, the Planning Commission agreed to defer public hearing and action for two weeks on special permit number 15006, which is item 5.1 of today's agenda. The public hearing will be limited to new testimony only. Those who have already testified will only be allowed to speak if they have new information to add to what they have already testified to previously. Please note, the Planning Commission action today is final on items numbers 1.1C, 4.1C, and 4.1D. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council by filing a notice of appeal with a city clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. All other items on the agenda are recommendations. This is, the first item in business is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held March 4th, 2015. Is there a motion?
Move of approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and call the vote.
Harris?
Yes.
Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Corr?
Not here yet.
Oh. Sunderman?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted on in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Item 1.1A, comprehensive plan conformance number 15003, to review as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, the proposed declaration of surplus property generally located at North 12th Street and Y Street. Item 1.1B, change of zone 15006, from P Public Use District to R8 Residential District on property generally located at Northwest 12th Street and Y Street. Item 1.1C is special permit number 14008A, an amendment to expand the community unit boundary to include additional parking, including a request to waive the front and side yard setback requirements on property generally located at North 12th Street and Y Street. Again, this is final action by the Planning Commission. Item 1.2 is street and alley vacation number 15001, to vacate the portion of L Street right-of-way lying east of South 8th Street and west of South 9th Street and north of Rosa Parks Way, Lincoln Lancaster County, Nebraska. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on the consent agenda?
I see none.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any item on the consent agenda? If so, please stand and state that item.
All right, seeing no one, we will move on to entertain a motion. Move of approval.
Second.
That was Kathy Beecham and who seconded it? Michael Cornelius seconded it.
Thank you.
Amy?
Harris?
Yes.
Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero. Again, this is final action on special permit number 14008A unless appealed to the City Council.
There are no requests for deferral on today's agenda. We will now proceed to the public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes. Then you have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, will you please call the first public hearing item?
Yes, actually, I will be calling items 4.1A through 4.1E together, but please note that these will be voted on separately, but they are related. Item 4.1A, annexation number 15003, annexing approximately 59.72 acres, more or less, and adjacent right-of-way generally located at South 84th and Van Dorn Street. Staff recommendation is approval. The next item is 4.1B, change of zone 15005, from AGR Agricultural Residential District to R1 Residential District on property generally located at South 84th Street and Van Dorn Street. Staff recommendation is for approval. Item 1.4.1C is special permit 872H, an amendment to the Firethorn Community Unit Plan to add approximately 42 single-family lots and an outdoor recreation facility that includes the sale of alcohol for consumption on the premises, all located west of South 91st Street, with requests to waive block length setbacks, curb radius, curb and gutter, roadway width, roadway cross-section, sidewalk, street trees, and ornamental lighting on property generally located at South 84th and Van Dorn Streets. Again, this is final action by the Planning Commission. The next item is item 4.1D, use permit number 107D, an amendment to the Firethorn Office Park to reconfigure the lot layout and slightly expand the area of the use permit on property generally located at South 84th and Firethorn Lane. The Planning Commission action on this item is also final unless appealed to the City Council. The last item is 4.1E, use permit number 15005, to allow approximately 225,000 square feet of office floor area with a waiver of setbacks on property generally located at the southeast corner of South 84th and Van Dorn Streets. Please note again that the final action on special permit 872H and use permit 107D are final unless appealed to the City Council. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these applications?
I see none.
Good afternoon, Brian, Will, Planning Department. As Jerry just noted, there's five applications here that are being considered. It's, there's a lot of moving parts here for really what isn't a terribly complicated project, but it's just there's so many applications, so many parts here that have to work together. So let me try to give you an overview and then explain each of the individual parts here to try to hopefully make this clearer. I'm first going to start by just showing you the zoomed-out aerial of the area, just for reference. So we're talking about, of course, Firethorn Development. Northwest corner is South 84th Street and Van Dorn, and so it's bounded then south by Pioneers, of course, on the east by 98th and then Van Dorn. So this is the area that we're talking about. The changes here, the four applications we're talking about today, really affect this area up in the northwest corner. And today, that area consists of fairways, and there's also what's called, I believe, the West 9, small golf course up in that, in this area right here, and there are a couple buildings associated with that. So, big picture, that's where we're talking about. So, five applications. Actually, one other thing I wanted to point out here. The brown line that you see here sort of weaves its way through the development has the corporate limit of the City of Lincoln. So, there are portions of the Community Unit Plan, which actually extends beyond that, that are outside the city limit. And so part of what we're doing here today, because you can see this brown line here, this area currently is outside the city limit. So outside the city limit currently is owned, has ag zoning as well. So the first thing, first application, sorry, AGR zoning, first thing is the applications to annex and rezone, and so this is the boundary of the annexation. This would bring the property into the City of Lincoln and allow for connection to utilities, services, et cetera. The change of zone application is, again, one of the slightly more complicated pieces to this. It's doing two things. It's setting the stage for both the expansion of the Firethorn Community Unit Plan, residential, this area here coming up here. So, this area outlined here changes the zoning to R1, from AGR to R1, so it can be developed residentially. This area we'll talk about just in a minute is the area for the proposed new use permit, 225,000 square feet of office development. The little sort of unique thing right here, there's a little land swap that's going on, and so this change of zone gets the zoning appropriate on these two little, two little pieces here so that they're zoned appropriately and can be included in to the use permit and then to the Community Unit Plan. And so then, so then next, the big part of it then is revising the Firethorn Community Unit Plan, and we're actually doing two things, showing a proposed layout for how this area's going to develop up here, but then also actually cutting a piece of it off here. That's what's being rezoned to O3, that's what's being proposed for the use permit. So the entire boundary is being revised and to show a layout for the 42 homes that we're talking about here today. I've mentioned then earlier, the new use permit, this is the area to be rezoned to O3 right at the intersection of 84th and Van Dorn. What's being proposed is 225,000 square feet of office floor area and essentially office floor area only. There is one waiver associated with that, and it is the setbacks. And then last, with the original Firethorn Development, it actually had its own use permit associated with it, and this outlines the boundary of it. You might recognize this is a site of former Lincoln Benefit Life, now Allstate Insurance Company, the building and parking lots. There's one other developed O3 lot there, there's still a couple vacant lots there, but this one is affected because, recall that little change of zone that I told you about, swapping property back and forth. It's to round off the corner of one of those O3 lots, and it's this one right here, so that encourages more favorable development in CUP. So that little land swap is what results in that use permit having to be amended. That one is as simple as that, but we had to do it. So, all five applications, staff is recommending approval of. I would note that, I think you got an email and actually an attachment, put a brief memo on it. This modifies one of the staff review comments from Public Works, and that's review comment number two. It's just a little more specific, has a little more detail, so this is just added to the staff report comments, doesn't modify the staff report. We already had a condition in there that it was subject to grading and drainage being revised to their satisfaction. Additionally, I do need to modify then, under the conditions of approval, my oversight, under the conditions where I'm talking about what's being approved for the special permit 872H, 395 dwelling units, two separate outdoor recreation facilities, where I talk about the waivers, I listened to the beginning of the report, talked about them inside the report, but neglected to carry forward the waiver to sidewalks that relates to South 88th Street. So I want to go ahead and include that waiver in as well. So with that, I'd go ahead and be happy to answer any questions that Planning Commission right have at this time.
Kathy?
Brian, can you just give us a quick overview of the issue with the curbs and the difference between what it normally is and what we're recommending here?
Yeah, I mean typically you've, I mean typically you've got a, I'm not sure what you call it, well, what's being proposed is a rollover curb.
Right.
And I mean there's, we're talking about adjacent to private roadways here, and oftentimes the concern that you hear with rollover curbs is they're, they make it a little more difficult to plow and that it's a little more difficult to find the edge because you don't have a, you don't have a sharp angle like that for the curb, it's something more like that. It also doesn't contain drainage as well. Drainage is one of the things the streets function to do, carrying stormwater. And so, in this case, private roadways, their drainage and grading plan is going to have to accommodate the fact that they're using rollover curbs instead of, instead of typical conventional curb. So, in concert with Public Works, private roadways, staff supported these waivers and curbs in this case.
Okay. And that's, is that the kind of curb we have in the rest of the development as well?
Actually, the rest of Firethorn doesn't have any.
Okay.
Firethorn, late 1970s, early 80s, essentially most all improvements were waived in the larger development. So if you drive out there, you'll see that you're just on essentially an asphalt roadway, ditches for the most part, so there's no curb and gutter, no street trees, no streetlights, the rest of those improvements. So, like I said, sort of a different era, but yeah.
Any other questions for Brian?
Brian, to kind of piggyback on that, I know that they're decreasing the width of the streets as well, from 27 to 24. Can you speak a little bit to that?
Yeah, and I'll let the applicant speak as well. They're proposing reducing the width from 27 to 24 feet. And again, we're talking about, you know, private roadways internal to this development where, you know, heavy traffic isn't going to be as much of a concern. Your standard public street width is 27 feet, okay? There are some development constraints in here that had a bearing on some of the roadway widths here as well, especially South 88th Street. The majority of that is existing, and widening it out anymore would prove to be pretty challenging. But so we're talking about a reduction in width of three feet, which has been done internal to community plans, you know, fairly routinely in the past.
All right. Other questions for Brian? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to testimony from the applicant.
Danae Kalkowski, I'm appearing today on behalf of Firethorn Development 2, Inc., which is an applicant on all five of these applications. Also here with me today is Mark Wyble, who's a principal with the development company and also with Firethorn Golf Company, and then also Brad Marshall from Olson Associates, who's been the engineer on the project. The package of applications before you today really is to permit, as Brian mentioned, about 60 acres of golf course area that's currently owned by Firethorn Golf Company. The area right now is, has been occupied by the nine-hole golf course, and we're south of Van Dorn and east of 84th Street. There's really kind of three main components. I know there's five applications, but there's really three main components to the development plan. The first thing really is the change of zone from AGR to O3, which allows the office development right there on the corner. We've got about almost 18 acres. So the big building and then the smaller buildings, so all encompass that O3 area. We have O3 zoning directly to the south of us, we have some B2 zoning over to the west on the other side of 84th Street, and then I think our property to the north, there's in the comp plan, is shown for some commercial area. So it's shown in the comp plan and consistent with some of the surrounding zoning. The second component of the plan is to amend the existing community unit plan to show a new recreational facility. Right now, the community unit plan allows, you know, the big Firethorn Golf Course, and this would be another second recreational facility. This is intended to be, I guess they're calling it the resort, it's intended to be a little more family-friendly, outside swimming pool, tennis courts, volleyball court, all kinds of activities outdoors, as well as some gym facilities indoor, and they also be reconfiguring the nine-hole golf course, so there'll also be some golf associated with it at this point in time. There will be a restaurant on the inside of the building that's also proposed for that.
So that area kind of comes down, grabs the golf holes and...
The third component of the land use plan is really just adding some additional residential units. The overall plan provided for the additional density, and this is right now just kind of showing it on the plan, we've got 34, I think 34 town home units and nine single-family lots that are being shown out here on the site plan. And the zoning on the recreational facility and then the residential would be R1, consistent with the Firethorn zoning out there for the residential. I think there were a couple main goals that Firethorn was trying to accomplish when they started this development. I think the first one was to develop land uses that were compatible with the existing office uses that are already out there and also with the Firethorn residential uses. And then the second main goal, I think, was to develop a layout that would preserve the character of those existing uses, and Firethorn Residential has its own unique character, and also to be sensitive to the wetlands that we have out here and the vegetated drainage ways. I'm just going to point those out. The main big drainage way that comes through here, and then also through here with wetlands, which somewhat complicates when you're putting your plan together and why we have some of the waivers that we need in here, because it brings up some issues with block lengths and that sort of thing. Mark Wyble, I think in order to meet those goals, Mark Wyble started early on with some neighborhood outreach. Before the end of the year last year, multiple meetings with individual homeowners out here one-on-one, and I think that culminated with a formal meeting on January 28th before we submitted our applications with all of the homeowners out there, just so everyone had an opportunity to know what was going on and to sort of see the overall plan. And there have been minor changes to it since then, but the overall land uses really have stayed the same. Mark also had individual visits with the existing office users out there. We have Allstate and existing user, we have an existing user down here, and then we also have Dick Young's cap who still owns an undeveloped lot there. We also followed that with an invitation to all our other adjacent property owners out there, inviting them to come to a meeting. That was February 26th. We didn't have any takers, nobody came to that meeting, but Lisa got the invitation, and we did have telephone conversations with the developer on the west side of 84th Street and then also the Somerset Apartments owner on the northwest corner. And so through all of that, no major real opposition to what we were planning. As you might imagine, trying to develop a plan and layout that's sensitive to existing uses, sensitive to the environment and trying to minimize impacts to the wetlands and the existing vegetation that we have out there, can be challenging while you're trying to meet all of the city standards. So, I think first of all, we'd like to thank the city staff for working through all of these issues with us. As you can imagine, there were multiple meetings, multiple revisions to plans, but I think both, both sides were able to listen to the other, move forward, make some compromise, and I think in the end come out with an agreement on a plan that meets the goals that they set out to accomplish in the first place. And I think the second result is also Planning Department recommendations and conditions of approval that we're in agreement with, which is really no small feat when you're talking about this many applications and plans with this much complexity. Did we end up with one more issue, or we? It sounds like we may have just one cleanup item on a condition that I'll let, maybe I'll let Brad address here. Otherwise, other than that, we were, we were supportive of all of the recommendations and all of the other conditions of approval, and so I think I'm going to let Brad maybe address that, and then he, Mark and I would all be available for any questions you might have.
Good afternoon, Brad Marshall with Olson Associates, 601 P Street. As Danae suggested here, there is one item on the conditions that is actually part of the special permit 872H, which is, it actually refers back to an existing note and the setbacks for the existing CUP. CUP is Zone R1, most of the residential areas, and there are residential areas that have been developed up to this point since annexation. Back when this was originally done, there was an agreement, originally it was going to be an R3 development and kind of at the same point that we are now, that was changed back to R1 to accommodate some of the existing residences that are out there, but they maintained the R3 setbacks. So, condition 1.1.1, which I think was just a, trying to make a correction because the R1 reference is to the existing zoning, the, we were asking for the R3 setbacks to remain to the lots that are being developed out there. In particular, this has to do with just the single-family lots because the setback waiver is requested on the townhome lots specifically.
So we'd be asking for a deletion of condition 1.1.1, which would allow that note to stay as it is today on the plan. And that's under special permit 872H.
I believe it's on page 78 of our packet.
And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
I have one. Danae, can you just show us on the map where the sidewalk waiver, where the street is that we're talking about for the sidewalk waiver and just address that a little bit?
Sure. The sidewalk waiver will be along 91st Street.
There we go, okay, thanks.
It's going to be along 91st Street. That street has already been built out there, built to rural standards, and there are already houses obviously existing on the east side, so the sidewalk waiver just allows, since that road's already in, just allows the character to stay what it is today for those nine lots. There's one other sidewalk waiver. We have a little connector road, and this was one of our compromises with, because of our wetlands, trying to make some connectivity between our office and rec facility down to Firethorn Lane. There's what we're kind of calling the connector road here between Firethorn Lane and the office area. There's a portion of road that's already existing out there that's been built to service the maintenance facility for the golf course which exists right here today. We're just going to take, which is, I'll get back to Tracy's question from before, but we're also asking for the sidewalk waiver on that section of roadway because again, we have a section that's already been built and existing that we're just going to tack on and finish to make the connection. So those are the two places where we're asking for the sidewalk waiver. We're putting sidewalk... for the sidewalk waiver. We're putting sidewalks in on all the new office area and in the townhome area and in the rec facility. And then the one question on the reduction of the width of the road, I think that applies primarily just to the connector road, because again, we're dealing with the section of roadway that was already in place that we're trying to leave and utilize and then just finish the connection. I believe in the townhome, it's just a regular width?
In the townhomes, it's been presented in the plans, the roadway width is 27 feet with rollover. And then the, kind of the loop road from Van Dorn through the office area, that is actually, proposes 27 feet as well with a standard curb, not a rollover. So that intent was for that to meet.
Meet all of the standards in that new area.
So the only roads with the waivers with the three-feet waiver are basically the ones that are already built and/or connecting, extending?
Yes, yes. And it's really just this one?
In our notes, it talks about three different ones. So it talks about Birdie Run Eagle View Way, which is up by the townhomes, I thought.
I think they're maybe talking about the townhome area, about what Brad indicates is on the plans that we've submitted. We're showing the 27-foot wide roadway and then the rollover curb on that.
Okay. And the other one was the South 87th Street and the Resort Drive?
I think that is our connector road.
South 87th would be.
Is that this one?
Would be this, with Resort Drive coming through here. And that would be a standard 27-foot.
Okay, so it's not going to be 24.
Correct.
Are you ready for my questions? If you guys choose to switch over to the 150 apartments over in that very northeast, northwest corner, is it still going to be as many buildings or is it going to be consolidated buildings? Because I know we have that space we have to consider for the pipeline.
There's a condition on the permit right now that in order to change to apartment use, it would have to come back in and there would need to be an administrative amendment so they could see the layout of that and make sure that that gas line easement or protection area, whatever we're calling it, is taken into consideration. So there would need to be further action at least, and further review of the plan before it could be changed to apartments. And then there are additional private use restrictions out here that would impact its ability to change to apartments also.
Can you show me on the plans, I couldn't find, you guys talk about zero setbacks on lots 104 through 145. I couldn't find all of them, so can you kind of point them out to me?
Some of them are actually in, from the original CUP.
Okay.
So that's why the numbering may be off a little bit, but particularly to the new area, it would just pertain to the townhome lots here.
Is it going to apply to the single-family that you have along, in the yellow there?
No, it does not.
Okay.
And that, and we ask for that because we show, the lot is only the buildable area and we show the common area and an outlot around those.
Right. Okay. I'm assuming that this has been addressed, but it didn't really say, so I wanted to ask, is the outdoor recreation facilities okay in the R1 zoning?
Yes. It's a special permitted use, and so what we have out here, the Firethorn CUP, is a special permit.
The temporary turn lanes on Van Dorn, I know that they say that they're going to have to be in there. Who's paying for those? Is that something the developer's taking on? Is it going to be paid through impact fees? How's that work?
We're addressing the construction of those in the annexation agreement. The, any part of the grading that will be done, associated with those, that would meet the future grade study, could be considered a permanent improvement that we could get some reimbursement for. But the asphalt for the physical turn lanes, which is a temporary improvement that will be torn out at some point in the future when this street is improved, are temporary, the developer's responsibility, and no reimbursement from the city.
Thank you for clarifying that. Lastly, for right now, I might come up with some more questions later. I know there is some limitation on the dwelling units because of the sewer treatment, and I know that it talks about, you know, if it's the 150 apartments and the residential units, but it never really states for the recreation facility, how many dwelling units does that equate to? I mean, I assume we're still underneath that limit, but I wanted to verify.
That's a good question. When we looked at it, we had to equate everything back to the original dwelling units, because that's what was originally established. So I have taken a look at the different types of uses that could come out here and come up with recommendation for, you know, so much square foot to, say, like so much square foot of office, that would equate to a dwelling unit. So we've applied that formula throughout here, and that's kind of how we backed up to the allowable square foot that's allowed for the office, and then also so many units too, and per clubhouse. And so we've essentially subtracted that off, that original 545 number, and that's how we've come up with what is remaining, and how they've been divvied out basically on each special permit.
And you're still under that 595 magic number?
545, yes. Yeah, and that is not being changed.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, I see none, so we'll move on to testimony and support of the application. All right, do we have any testimony in opposition of this application? See none. Did we have any additional questions for Brian?
I do.
Okay, Maya?
Are you in agreement with the cleanup?
Yeah.
Deletion of the?
Yeah. Essentially, I added that as what I thought was just a corrective, there's probably an oversight, because the zoning had changed over this area from R3 to R1 over time. Leaving it or deleting that note altogether, that's fine. Staff has no issue with that.
So would you mind just going over what the revisions are to the conditions? So it's basically deleting 1.1.1?
Yes.
And then the sidewalk waiver that you mentioned at the beginning?
Yeah, so modifying, and starting under the conditions, there's the first statement that talks about what's being approved. So it talks about the waivers, adding in hand sidewalks, and then right, deleting Condition 1.1.1, and then adding additional review comments from Public Works. And that's the extent of it.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Brian?
Brian, I've got a question, and I know I should know the answer to this, but parking on that section with the O3 that they might change to the apartments, what are parking regulations for the office, like an office building versus an apartment complex? Are they pretty similar?
I don't know, I'd say they're similar. Office is 1 to 300, one space per 300 square feet of floor area. And parking for apartments, I think it's, I want to say it's two spaces per dwelling unit? Yeah. So that's a detail. There's been no adjustment to that, so at the time of building permit, they're going to have to provide the required parking either way they go. And that's why I tried to, I mean, point out, that concept that's shown, or that layout that's shown is just conceptual. At the time of building permit, based on the specific floor area of those buildings, the required parking will have to be provided. Or conversely, if it's apartments, they'll have to do the same.
When you're looking at the conceptual site plan, do you think there's enough parking there if they do go to the apartment option?
Well, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Sure, if they choose to go to the apartment option, do you think there's ample room for, to meet the parking requirement?
Well, that's one of your development constraints. I mean, you've got your printer setback, and then you're going to start laying out your buildings. So one of the constraints, how many units can I get there? Well, one of those is going to be how many parking spaces are required. Those puzzle pieces start fitting together and partially laying out your site anyway, so it's difficult to say. Right now, we have a layout for offices. I have no idea what that might look like for apartments. They could do an apartment layout that would work there, yes, but whether it can fit 150 units or not with required parking, I don't know.
And that would be reviewed at time of administrative amendment?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Brian? All right, seeing none. I assume you guys don't need rebuttal. All right. We will have Jerry start calling the applications.
Item 1.1A, Annexation Number 15003, annexing approximately 59.72 acres, more or less, and adjacent right-of-way, generally located at South 84th Street and Van Dorn Street. Staff recommendation is for approval.
Move approval.
Second. That was Mr. Ho followed by Ms. Beecham. Discussion. Okay, well, I think this looks like a good project for the area. They're keeping, in general, the character of recreation in the area while expanding both office and residential opportunities out there, so I think it looks like a good project, and I'm going to support all of the applications. Amy?
Harris?
Yes.
Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Next item is Item 4.1B, Change of Zone Number 15005, from AGR Agricultural Residential District to R1 Residential District on property generally located at South 84th Street and West Van Dorn Street. Staff recommendation is for approval.
Move approval.
Any additional discussion? All right, Amy?
Harris?
Yes.
Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried eight to zero. The next item is 4.1C, Special Permit Number 872H, An Amendment to the Firethorn Community Unit Plan to Add Approximately 42 Single Family Lots and an Outdoor Recreation Facility That Includes the Sale of Alcohol for Consumption on the Premises Located West of South 91st Street With Request to Wav Block Length, Setbacks, Curve Radius, Curb and Gutter Roadway Width, Roadway Cross-Section, Sidewalks, Street Trees, and Ornamental Lighting on Property Generally Located at South 84th and Van Dorn Streets. This is final action by the Planning Commission unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days. Staff recommendation is conditional approval, as amended.
Move approval as revised or as amended.
Second. And Chris, that includes the applicant's proposed deletion?
Yep.
That was Mr. Ho followed by Ms. Harris.
Thank you.
I do want to state that some of these waivers do cause me concern. I'm not generally for waiving sidewalks or street trees or the lighting in general, but I feel that my hands are kind of tied on this one because we're fitting it in with an existing development, and so in order to support the comp plan, to blend this in, we kind of have to do that. But I just want to make sure I'm not, I don't like to approve these waivers, but I understand in this case.
All right, any other comments? All right, Amy?
Harris?
Yes.
Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried eight to zero. Next item is Item 4.1D, Use Permit Number 107D, An Amendment to the Firethorn Office Park to Reconfigure the Lot Layout and Slightly Expand the Area of the Use Permit on Property Generally Located at South 84th Street and Firethorn Lane. The Planning Commission Action on this item is final unless appealed to the City Council. Staff recommendation is for approval.
So moved.
Michael Cornelius?
Second.
Tracy Corr? Any discussion? All right, Amy?
Harris?
Yes.
Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried eight to zero. The next item is Item 4.1E, Use Permit Number 15005, To Allow Approximately 225,000 Square Feet of Office Floor Area With a Waiver to the Setbacks on Property Generally Located at the Southeast Corner of South 84th Street and Van Dorn Streets. Staff recommendation is conditional approval.
Move approval.
Mr. Ho?
Second.
Ms. Harris?
I'm going to interject one more time. I just forgot to thank you guys for your extensive outreach to the community.
All right, Amy?
Harris?
Yes.
Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried eight to zero. Note that the final action, this is final action on Special Permit Number 872H and Use Permit Number 107D unless appealed to the City Council.
All right, Jerry, please call the next item scheduled for continued public hearing and action.
Okay. Item 5.1, County Special Permit Number 15006, To Allow the Development of the Coyote Ridge Edition Community Unit Plan Consisting of Nine Single Family acreage Lots, Including a Request to Wav the Cul-de-sac Length on Property Generally Located at Northwest 70th Street and West Rock Creek Road. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this application?
I see none.
Good afternoon, Sarah Hertz, Planning Staff. I gave you a full presentation on this two weeks ago, so I won't go back over the entire thing, but the property is located at Northwest 70th and Rock Creek Road. Proposal is for nine dwelling units on this property. That is, seven dwelling units allowed with two dwelling units by the 25% bonus for clustering. And there were, and I think you've received some additional information from the public and from staff, there were concerns about groundwater. We had some discussion two weeks ago, and Health Department is able to be here today to answer some of the questions that you had about how those reports are analyzed. So John Chess.
Good afternoon, I'm John Chess. I'm with Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department, Water Quality Supervisor, and this week I've sent you two attachments. The first one is an overview of the sections and research we did prior to identifying the wells and their gallons per minute of pumping. Based on reviewing of this information, we indicated that we, it appears that there's ample water for the development based on this information. And then in the memo attached, I just go through the logic we follow, the standards we use as far as the five gallons per minute, and the review of the test well data, the hardness of the water, and those typical factors we look at when we do one of these. So probably just open it up for questions and respond as best I can.
Sure. My first question basically starts with the last sentence of your analysis, which says, "The review should not be considered as a guarantee that adequate quantity and quality of water will be available at any specific lot." Does that mean that in this review, you haven't really made a determination as to whether this development will affect other development in the area?
Not at all, no.
Okay, explain what that means.
We just don't do that. We take a look at, take a look at the wells and the sections of the area. It appears that the formation is water-bearing, and it has enough water to meet the domestic needs of the proposed five, the nine homes coming in. There's no way for us to know what the usage is of anybody in those sections. Instance, we allow someone, you know, in a subdivision, and all of a sudden decides to put a pond in. I mean, how do, we can't foresee what people are going to do and what their water usage is. So there's just no way we do that. So we just get the appearance, and it appears that the formation has enough water bearing to adequately suit the needs of domestics.
But not analysis of whether this development will affect existing neighbors?
Just, it's just impossible to do from our standpoint.
Do you have any suspicion on why they would have issues with their wells, why they're having problems with?
Not, it's Lancaster County.
Okay.
So it's not unusual as we go through in what I've seen over the last 42 years.
So John, as you're doing your analysis, if you, if you are, if you're in an area where you're hearing from a lot of neighbors and residents in the area that they've had problems, does that get factored in at all to the analysis, or do you do, ever consider doing two test wells instead of one?
If we didn't have the availability of the natural resources, the other well logs, yes, but since there's other data available to us, then if we needed to go through a third test well, a second test well, we would, and/or ask them to provide us additional information.
Okay.
So, based on what you know, that the one test well is sufficient for all nine lots?
Based, based on the test well and the other data as far as what appears to be the water-bearing formation, yes.
Okay.
Can you talk about, I'm just, I can't remember where I read it now, but there was a question about the wells potentially needing to be drilled to different depths. Can you talk about that a little bit? And is that something that is ever a recommendation, or is it really just, you recommend drilling a test well before putting a house on a property?
You know, they, they drill the test well to indicate where the water is. Now, when you go in to drill a well for an individual residence, as they drill down, and this variable, based on what lot you are and what formation you're in and whether you're uphill or downhill, once they hit the static water level, then they'll go down deeper depending on what the well driller decides as far as the pumping rate, what he wants to screen and things like that. And the deeper you go below the static water level, then the better water you're going to have, so. So that's kind of an individual choice of the water, water well contractor. And keep in mind, it also costs so many dollars for each foot you drill.
Do, sorry, do you know, you, you say in here that the Health Department doesn't attempt to predict the water impact. Does anybody do that? It sounds like NRD doesn't, Health Department doesn't. Is, is that something that somebody is looking at as we do development?
I've never heard of anyone doing that. It's, again, how do you measure the variability of what people do with their water?
And do you know, are, are there issues? I mean, I'm not very familiar with water law and water rights, so what, what rights do existing landowners have to water versus?
Kathy, I, I asked Brittany Barons from the County Attorney's Office to come in and address those issues. So, I feel hold off on those. She's got a presentation ready to go.
Thanks.
Do you have, do we have any other questions for the Health Department before we move on to Brittany? Okay.
Thanks, Janelle, you read my mind.
Thank you.
Brittany Barons, Deputy Lancaster County Attorney. With those concerns, I think it's obviously very important for you guys to have general information with regard to water rights and water law and kind of what your role is with regard to those rights. And I think the basic piece of information that you need to have is that with regard to domestic users of groundwater, there is no priority or preference. So, this isn't a situation like surface water where we're talking about a rule of first in time or first in right, that no priority, no preference with regard to domestic users and time. So, as we bring in additional dwelling units and additional landowners, it's essentially equal share and equal right to use and beneficial use of the water on their property. With that said, the courts have recognized a cause of action between landowners and between groundwater users and domestic groundwater users. And the test is based on reasonableness of use, and I'm going to, I'm going to read to you essentially kind of what the, what the test is so that we have kind of a basis for understanding what we're talking about. It states that an owner cannot extract and appropriate groundwater in excess of a reasonable and beneficial use upon the land which he owns, especially if such would be injurious to adjacent property owners. What that test means is it is a test of reasonable use, so it's going to be, you know, the analysis is going to be on a case-by-case basis, and tests of reasonableness are somewhat difficult to establish. There is not any recent case law on similar development and groundwater disputes. The court, like I said, has recognized such disputes, but the test of reasonable use is based on a case-by-case basis of that which the property owners are using their water for. So, it is not something that I've ever seen in Nebraska, a situation where, because of what John said, the speculative nature at the point in time which the special permits come before the Planning Commission, you guys oftentimes don't have ample information to, to answer that question, that it is somewhat speculative in nature as to, as those dwelling units come forward and people begin using their water, the determination is made on a case-by-case basis at that time. If you guys have any questions or additional, you know, information, I'd be happy to kind of try to flush that out, but as I said, our lovely legal word of reasonableness.
Sure. The current owner of the property as it is, would they be able to put in an irrigation well?
And I specifically didn't speak to representatives of the NRD, but I know that both, I think Sarah and John did, so we do have that information, that simple answer is yes. Sarah probably has a more detailed explanation.
I spoke with Dick Erman with the NRD who does the groundwater and surface water and deals with these permits, and, and permits are required. They require information on the well, what is the pumping rate, what's the depth, you know, how much static water level, that sort of thing. This area is not restricted, so there's, you know, the purpose of the permitting in this area is to gather information about water. How many irrigated acres are you planning on irrigating? That all goes into the basin-wide water plan that NRD is in charge of. There is an area north of here, I think it's a little over a mile north of here where they do have some restrictions. Now, if, Dick said that if an irrigation well goes over 250 gallons per minute, the, they are required to provide information on the effect on the aquifer. So, if you have a larger irrigation well, then they have to provide some additional information on that aquifer that's being pumped from.
So, from a legal perspective, the NRD's requirements are purely information gathering as it relates to the permitting process. It's not a regulatory process in this section.
I have a quick question. So, it sounds like there's no sort of first right to the water since you were here first. Is there anything in terms of usage agricultural versus residential?
Yes, the case law does differentiate between domestic users and agricultural and commercial and industrial users, and domestic users would have, then, then we do have a hierarchy. So, a domestic user as opposed to an agricultural or industrial and commercial, it does, it does change the game a bit. There then does become priority and preference. Domestic user first, but there are also other variables that are considered in that test, but that is no longer a no priority, no preference rule.
But domestic users first before the agricultural?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We'll move on to testimony from the applicant, if you have anything in addition to what you had to say the last time you were here.
My name's Dan Rosenthal of the Regent and Regent Group, and I believe we're mostly talking about the wells today, so.
Right.
Let's see, is this the right spot? I just wanted to bring this, maybe kind of lead into the discussion. I can leave this up here as kind of a reference. As you can see, this is the well with that, the test well that we have, and this area in here is where the new nine lots are going to go, and the closest well is this residence right over here, and that's about 1,000 feet away. So, there would be a lot here to the, to the west, so there would be a, a new well that probably be about 800 feet from that well. Just to give you perspective, you can kind of see in this general area about how many wells are in that area, so I might just leave that up for now unless we need something One thing that we did some research on, and Mr. Moser's here to talk about the wells in the area and some things, but looking at our well, we're down about 165, 170 feet, and we're in a aquifer layer where the well at this location is down about 105 feet, which it appears that it didn't go deep enough, so they're kind of in a clay area, which would restrict their ability to pump water. So, if they would have went maybe another 40, 50 feet deeper, they probably would hit some really good water. So, that kind of affects where you end up with that, your screens and where you end up with a different type of materials, because if you go into more of a sand gravel, it lets the water flow faster and recharge that area around that pump, that screen faster. I guess with that being said, is there any questions about that? Otherwise, I'll kind of let Gene and Mr. Moser talk about wells, I guess.
Thank you.
Well, we can hand them down if you want to come pass them down.
Thank you.
First, I'm going to address about the five-minute deal. There's no way in God's green earth can you talk about water in five minutes?
At your request for more time. Can you please first state your name for the record, too?
Yeah, my name's Alan Moser, and I live in Hickman, lived here all my life. Our family business has been in Hickman for 115 years now. We've been drilling wells and been involved with water wells for 115 years. And so, since we've been at the same address for 115 years, we kind of know the, the region by geology, and drill a lot of wells throughout the county and the surrounding counties. And what I gave you, it's kind of like what the county health guy, John Chess, gave you with the grid section, but they don't understand wells like we do, and I went and got a little bit more information about the wells that they were coming up with at the same Nebraska website. And some of their wells that they had listed on there, they said there was like no, no gallons per minute registered or something like that, they had no knowledge of it well. Some of those wells, when you look at the state reports, they're actually abandoned wells, so there, there doesn't, there ends up not being as many wells on the grid as they have, because a lot of those wells have been abandoned, about four or five of them of all in this grid. There's actually total, a total of 30 registered wells in this grid, and of this, 37 are ag irrigation wells. Now, I have a question. If there's anybody in the audience that has an irrigation well on this grid, is there an irrigation well owner here?
Let them address the audience.
Yeah, we'll just let them testify when.
Well, I just wanted to know if there's anyone here with an irrigation well, because there's seven irrigation wells in this grid, and Mr. Benish's land is right in the middle of the seven irrigation wells. And if anybody has qualms about water, they better be looking at these seven irrigation wells in their grid. And if you look at the, I think it's your, it's your second, second page, talks about what, how much water an ag, an ag irrigation well uses. If you have, the highest capacity ag well on this grid was, is listed at 500 gallons a minute, and the other ones are around 400. So, if you take 500 gallons a minute, that's 30,000 gallons an hour, 500 times 60. You take 30,000 gallons an hour times 24 hours a day, that's 720,000 gallons in 24 hours. And if you only pump that irrigation well 10 full solid 24-hour days, then you've used 7,200,000 gallons in only 10 days for an irrigation season of 10 days. And a house well, domestic well with four people, uses right at 200 gallons per day during the non-lawn watering time of the year of about eight, eight months. So, eight months times 30 days per month is 240 days, and if you have 240 days times 200 gallons per day, that's 48,000 gallons of water for eight months. Then, the next four months, the other four months for a house, if you add in irrigation, lawn irrigation, lawn watering, and that comes up to about 5,400 gallons per cycle. Every, every time they turn their time clock on, it goes through a zones, and it uses 15 gallons a minute, and if you have, that's 900 gallons an hour, and if it runs for six hours each time it goes, that's 5,400 gallons. And if they run this three times a week, that'd be 16 weeks total, so you got 48 cycles times 5,400 gallons a cycle, that's about 260,000 gallons. Okay, go down to the bottom here, eight months of household use, just for inside the house, you have 50,000, you have four months of outdoor watering, adds 300,000. Total for one house for 12 months is about 400,000 gallons a year, and you take that times nine houses, you end up with 3,000, 3,600,000 gallons for nine houses for one year. And an irrigation well uses 7,200,000 in 10 days. So, nine houses in 12 months use half of what the irrigation well produces, has to use in 10 solid days. And if you look at the, the last two pages have all the sections, they're highlighted in blue, and I did this, wrote this out by hand, and you can see down the left, towards the left side, I have the geology of where the aquifer is that they're drawing water from. So, if you start at section 24, there's three wells. The first well is 108-foot deep, has an aquifer of good sand from 78 to 108. You could, you don't go by how much, the state registration, when it shows pumping capacity, that only refers to the pump that's in the well that's registered, how much that particular pump produces. The registration on the, on the website does not tell anyone the capacity of the well, and that's what everybody wants to know. What's the capacity of the well? And the only way you're going to know the capacity of the well is when the driller makes the well, and he test pumps it. Okay, page three is our log of the well we made for Benish. It tells you on there the complete geology printout of what's from top of the ground to the bottom. And over on the right-hand side, it tells you what the water level is of 87 feet and what the pumping water level is, and we tested that well with an air compressor. We used the air compressor on the drill rig to blow air down, it brings water up, and we pump a well, that's called pumping a well with air, and we pumped the well at 30 gallons a minute with air compressor. If you look over at the, at the aquifer, the total depth of aquifer starts at 98 feet, where it says medium fine gray sand, and it goes all the way down to 160 feet where it ends, the sand, coarse sand ends. So, basically, you've got 60-foot of aquifer. Aquifer is what, where the water is stored. Water is not stored in clay. And when people want to talk about this stupid hydrologic cycle where you've got rainwater and it goes down, it goes in the ground, gets to your well, that's a bunch of bull, because if you look at the log, it says 0 to 50 is brown clay. Now, Mr. Chess, when a person does a PERC test and they, the water doesn't go down fast enough, what does that tell you in the first three feet?
You have to just talk, sir.
Anyhow, clay, if you did not have clay in our part of the world, out in the sand hills, you got sand, and that's why they got a lot of chemical problems out there. We have clay, and clay is a blocker. You can't get rainwater through 50-foot of clay. You could lay a garden hose there and let it run all day long, real slow. It isn't going to trickle down very far, it's going to run off, and that's what rain does. Rain does not. It, rain does not get down into the aquifer, it goes into the creeks, the creeks take the water away, and some places where there's real shallow water, like a hand-dug well, they'll get their water from rainwater, it seeps into the ground, and can get down in the clay and come in an old hand-dug well, that's ancient days, we don't have hand-dug wells anymore. OSHA wouldn't approve it. My grandfather used to dig them by hand, five-foot diameter, spade and shovel. So, um, if you, the last two pages, I'm telling you, there's these thirty wells, and they tell you what the, the aquifer is that each well is in. And you, there's about one or two wells that have kind of a marginal aquifer. And one of them is one close to, uh, Mr. Benish on the west side and just a hair north, and I think the driller was, the driller was not from around this part of the world, he was from way up north Nebraska, and he's an irrigation driller, and irrigation drillers, they like to drill fast, push that drill pipe in the ground as fast as they can. Well, they miss them things once in a while. And when you're drilling house wells, you, you gotta be, in our part of the world, you gotta be a little careful when you're drilling, you might miss something for a sand aquifer, it might only be three foot thick. Well, irrigation driller, he's looking for sand aquifer that's minimum twenty foot thick, and that's the difference between an irrigation driller and a domestic well driller. And they wrote down in their log, that well was, uh, a hundred and five feet deep, and they have, on that particular well that's a hundred and five foot deep, they say from ninety to a hundred and five foot, they had good sand. There is no pumping information recorded by the driller, but the driller says that the water level is twenty foot. Now, I think there's a big error on the driller's part here, because that well is uphill somewhat from Mr. Benish's well, and the water level at Mr. Benish's is eighty-seven feet. And, uh, I, I just think that there might be, the driller might've wrote up his report wrong, and I've seen this happen before, where the driller filled out the wrong report for the, for a particular well, and then had to find out he made out the, missed the, filled out the paperwork for the wrong well and had to redo it. That, that happens when you're busy, in a hurry doing some paperwork. And, uh, those ag irrigation wells, there's one section, section eleven, that's to the, be to the northwest of Benish's section. The only registered wells in that section are three ag irrigation wells. And, uh, when you look at the aquifer, you go to section eleven, and it shows you the, the aquifer, the one that's two hundred and forty foot deep, it has two different aquifer layers, a hundred and eighteen to one twenty-three, and one sixty-nine to two forty. And then the other two irrigation wells are in lower elevation ground, they're a hundred feet deep, a hundred and one feet deep, and they have sand and gravel from forty-six to ninety-five, and the other one has sand and gravel from thirty-nine to a hundred. Now, those kind of wells don't get fed by rainwater or creeks, it comes from a, an aquifer that is fed from outside underground sources, not above ground. And, um, and if, we go back to ours, our log, uh, there, we have that huge, had that real thick, very thick layer of sand aquifer, and, uh, his, his nine lots, I don't have that, yeah, I have it right here. Our, our well is in the, I think, the northwest corner of lot one, and, um, it all goes downhill from there, where our well's at the highest point. And if you go and start making wells for these lots, you're gonna be hitting the same aquifer, because it's not, the aquifer, uh, the texture of the aquifer and stuff isn't gonna change that much in this small area of ground. What's gonna happen is you're gonna have shallower depth wells as you go on these other lots and keep going downhill. Where a hundred and sixty foot, that well down in lot three, that might be down there at, uh, twenty, twenty to thirty foot less, it could only be a hundred and thirty foot deep when it's made, but the, because the aquifer stays pretty level. Sometimes you find an aquifer in an area, uh, the sand aquifer will kind of be like a sand dunes, you know, kind of like this sometimes, and that's what you can find underground too. But the water level will stay the same. And, uh, there's lots of water in, uh, the well we made, there's, uh, the water level's eighty-seven foot, it's a hundred and sixty foot deep, and so there's, it's almost not quite half-full of water, but that doesn't really count, it counts as how fast it comes into the well, not how much you have. We have some wells that only have fifteen feet of water, and I got one running right now, that's test pumping at fifty gallons a minute, today's its fifth day, twenty-four hours per day, it's been running fifty gallons a minute, uh, with a fifteen-foot, uh, fifteen feet, uh, it has twenty feet of water in the well, and we just made it, and it's pumping five days nonstop, fifty gallons a minute, not phasing it. All right, I, I think that's all I have.
Sir, can I just ask?
If you have any questions?
Sure, I'm just gonna ask you a real simple question, so.
Sit down.
Based on, yeah, no, based on all the wells, you, wells you've drilled in this area and the test pumping, that, the test wells that you've done, is it your opinion, having worked, I don't know, what'd you say, fifty years in this area, that we can put nine domestic wells without affecting the neighbor's water supply?
I would say, yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
With that kind of an aquifer, that sand aquifer that's there, yeah, there's, uh, sixty, you have fifty, sixty foot of sand aquifer, there's, there's no, and as deep as it is, if it was, if you had from forty to a hundred foot, where we made the well of an aquifer, then, yeah, it could, it could have a, have an effect, but you go, what you've got is, you have these, he's in between all these irrigation wells, and each irrigation well has a red dot on here, and there's two of them in his section, three up above him, and two down here.
All right, so, the answer's yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you say, would you say that anyone else in this area would have access, would be able to access that same aquifer themselves, if, if they went deep enough, or if they re-drilled their, their well?
Well, as you go west, this type of an aquifer we have, as you go west further, you, it's like this one irrigation well up here in section that's two hundred and forty His aquifer is, he's uphill a long ways, and then the aquifer starts to dip down. These aquifers are, the aquifers are sand, they got deposited by the glaciers and the rivers that were running through here from the ice melt, and depositing gravel and sands. And if the clay that was there first got cut away, you could have, that's why you have a, you'll have a, um, the sand aquifer at this height, and then it'll start going downhill some places, you hit it deeper, because the underlaying area of, of clay and shale was cut away before it had a chance to be deposited, and then it got deposited in a lower spot, just like you go fishing, you got your, your locators to tell you where the different shelves are and stuff like that, and that's what kind of, you can visualize that from when this earth was formed.
I, I think what Mr. Ho is asking you is, if the neighbors start to have problems, do they just need to, um, re-drill their wells to a different depth?
I don't think they're gonna get affected, I don't think they're gonna get affected, because there, there's other wells that are in different aquifer up there. If, if, if that's an accurate log of that particular driller, that says he had good sand from ninety to a hundred and five feet, and they're up above, where we, where Benish's well is higher in elevation, and if that's an accurate log, they're in a different aquifer than we are.
Okay, thank you.
So because this well is below the clay layer, it shouldn't have that impact on the things above the clay layer?
Right.
Am I understanding that correctly?
Right, clay is a, clay is a blocker in, in more ways than one, it blocks surface contaminants and it, it, and when, like, some of these logs, you'll see there's two different, distinct aquifers, and there have, in between them, a clay layer, and so they can't intertwine because of the clay layer. The only way they can intertwine is if you drill a conduit hole between the two, and then they could affect each other.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Moser? Thank you for coming. Do we have any additional testimony in support of this application? Um, do we have testimony in opposition to the application that's different than what you testified to maybe previously?
My name is Don Olson, I address at three eighteen County Road twenty-nine Valparaiso. I testified about the groundwater before. This time, I'm concerned about the excess runoff from all the roofs and the concrete roads, and also the runoff from the, if the people have lawn sprinklers, you're gonna have pollution, and it's railroad, and will the, when we have high water, Oak Creek gets completely full at that area, and it gets backed up on the railroad track. So, if we have high water, we have more runoff than normal because we have less ground exorption, is this railroad bridge and is the culvert on Highway seventy-nine gonna be big enough to withstand the runoff of this area? And they talked about irrigation wells. I follow the NRD, and the Nebraska state law says water does not belong to one individual, it belongs to everybody in the state of Nebraska. Texas says, you own the land, you own the water under it. State of Nebraska is not like that. And there is laws that says you cannot, like the irrigators, if they over irrigate, you cannot let that water run off your property. And that's seemingly with groundwater from wells. You're supposed to make sure that this groundwater does not run off your property when you have And also, have they taken consideration when they build the roads, and the excessive runoff, are they gonna have big enough culverts to handle the problem so that the next person down below the road, when they build these houses, that he's not gonna be affected by all the excessive runoff? This is what's happening on Northwest Eighty-Fourth right now, and Rock Creek Road. There's one individual there, all the water comes out of the field, across the road, plus all the surface water from all the houses, and he has a shed that's getting washed away. I mean, I, I don't, I wished he was here to testify, but this is true fact. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other testimony in opposition? And again, I'd remind you, if you've testified before, this is new material, please.
I haven't testified before.
Okay.
Um, my name is Elaine Olson, and I live at three eighteen County Road twenty-nine Valparaiso, and I own farm ground on fifteen, twelve, five east, recently purchased that from my parents. So what I'm talking about is something that historically I have, you know, seen or lived through or heard, or, you know, in all my years of living in that area. And I can't predict the future, but I think there's gonna be a lot of work for wellmen, you know, in the area. People have had to dig several different wells in that area, they, instead of having a well in their area, they've had to draw water from further away to get it into their house. In the past, they've not had enough water to wash clothes or to take, and then take a shower with, when they didn't have enough water for that, you know, for it to regenerate. People have had smelly, funny tasting water, and people have, in their houses now, they've got filtering systems, you know, to help get a good drinking water from that area. And then, there are people that have had, um, their submersible pumps, you know, filled with, um, like sediment and, and rust from the, from sucking air, and so they go to the faucet and there's no water. So you've got, and I know that there's probably, this has happened to, like, nine or more people of, like, um, properties in this area. So if you put nine more houses in this area, right in the middle of the, of this surrounding area, I'm wondering what's gonna happen, you know, to their water. And then, um, we had to make little road trips, we went through the country, and I saw the power lines, so I'm going, well, who are the, you know, will there have to be more power lines in this area, and will it affect, you know, that land? They don't just put them on the road, they go through people's properties. And, you know, a lot of people have spent their life, life savings to live out in the country, so what happens when their house doesn't have any water? Or else they have to keep drilling deeper, deeper, deeper. And I think you have, you've had a lot of good questions, so thank you.
Any other testimony in opposition?
My name is Mary Berry, and I live at eighteen thousand, seven hundred Northwest Seventieth, Raymond, that's a half mile south of the proposed development, and I'm concerned about the well water in the area. I own five acres that encompass the old farmstead, and in the years I have been acquainted with the farm there, I've had, there have been four wells. I know they probably, my last one may have been dug by Mr. Moser, I know the others weren't. The first one went dry, the second one was salt water, the third one was pumping sand, and now the fourth one. I buy drinking water because the water smells and it tastes bad, but I am very happy to have water at this point, and I believe that several wells this close to me could have a very real effect on my water level. And I would like to refer to the, the irrigation well, I believe it's on the land where my acreage is, um, one of those irrigation wells, and it has not been used for thirty years, it probably was used for about two years. The NRD checks it regularly to see the level, and since it was drilled, the water level has fallen twenty-five feet. Thank you.
Any other testimony in opposition?
Hi, I'm Sharon Crowe Bill, and I live at nineteen thousand Northwest Eighty-Fourth. I have lived at this place for fifty years. I protest the building of the houses that would be at Northwest Seventieth Street and West Rock Road Creek. The water issue is my complete water, water is complete, water is hard to find, water complete, water is hard to find. We have had three wells drilled since we built, built. The people that drilled our wells said water is hard to find in the area, not much there. The water is stinky and hard, not good at all. I know because I have been through this mess. Neighbors are complaining of wells being short of water, their wells have changed since they, since they built, they are getting air in their lines. Some have two wells running their household, can't use their water outdoors because of shortage. More homes, less water for the area. Water is a big problem in the world. It used to be farmland and not development for people, neighbors used to live miles apart. I would just like to mention, water you can do without if a storm destroys your property, but you can't always rebuild if water rebuild, but running out of water destroys everything. You have worked for all your life and, uh, and your family, you can't do without water. But if a storm comes by, you can always rebuild if you have water. Thank you.
Any other testimony in opposition?
Hello, my name is Bob Chaddock, I live about a half mile from where this is gonna be, the housing, we've lived there twenty-five years. Years ago, we never had any smell of water, no taste, anything like that. As the houses have been coming in the area, um, within the mile I live, there's been about fifteen houses built, half a mile from me, about six or seven mi- mile away, maybe three, four more, mile north, to the east, all over. the east, all over. Our water has gotten more and more offensive, the smell, as you've heard. Also with the air in the lines, I've had that problem. I used to water the garden all the time. I don't water the grass, I don't want to mow, it's on a farm there. But I watered some grass just to get it seeded in. It ran four hours, all of a sudden it's popping, I'm getting air. I don't know if the water level's dropped and I'm having problems getting to the well or how that works, but I do know it's changed in the 25 years I've lived there. My worry is that the water is drop, dropping. It, I feel it is something to do with the houses in the area also drawing from it. I do know my well is deep and I do know they had problems getting it water there. So I am concerned and I don't want to drill another well if I don't have to, obviously. That's my concern, is if these houses go in, that it's going to drop more and I'm already maybe at the point. I guess that's it.
One quick question. Do you happen to know, you mentioned your well is deep, do you happen to know how deep it is?
A hundred and 20 feet.
Thanks.
But I do know they have problems too, from different people, that they drilled several times to get water on my place. And they said across the road, they couldn't find water in a couple of times when they tried. So maybe I'm right on the edge and maybe I'm having more problems than other people would, but, you know, that's my problem, I guess.
Mr. Chatick, what's your address for the record, please?
78 Hunter, West Rock Creek Road, just about a half mile west.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other testimony in opposition?
John Benish, 7704 West Davie Road. I live on the home place. My parents bought over 50 years ago. Our well is pumps about 5 gallons a minute. But to get that, we put in a 16 inch irrigation well casing. It's approximately 200 feet deep. It's about 58 grains hard. So, yes, water is extremely hard to get in our area. We feel that nine more houses, it's going to put more pressure on our water system.
Any other testimony in opposition? All right, do we have questions for staff?
I have one more question for the applicant, can I ask?
The applicant will have rebuttal after staff, so if you don't have staff questions. Any staff questions? All right. We will hear from the applicant then.
I have a quick question for you. So, looking at this sort of grid we have from Mr. Mosher with the different depths and where the clay is and everything, can you tell us the depth of the wells that you're, do you have a depth, a standard depth you're planning to drill for these properties?
The, the test well that was drilled, I believe, is at 170 feet, which...
160.
160. And the screen or the water depth is about, what, 60 feet? So that would be about that 120. So, there's that clay layer in there. And the other well that the other gentleman just talked about, I think has stopped right at that clay layer. So, we'd be below that clay layer that he was talking about. So, as Ellen said earlier, that those two probably don't affect each other.
And then the, the health department had mentioned in here that they recommend drilling the individual test wells prior to putting the property. Do you plan to do that?
Well, that's what we already did for the one, the information you have. And each well would be drilled from there, tested, and if it's good, then you would stop and use that well.
Okay.
And then we do plan on using this well as a permanent well, not just abandoning that well. I guess I just wanted, unless anybody has any questions, I'll just want to go through some of these comments.
Yes, please.
Okay. The one was on the paving, there won't be any paving. There may be a driveway approach or something like that. And then the roads will all be gravel, and the majority of the site will all be some rooftops and native grasses and stuff like that. Ellen, I mean, I'm sorry, John Chest did talk about the 5 gallons per minute minimum. And all the information we could find is that nobody had gone below the 5 gallons per minute for the wells. The rust and, that could be some screens that are, you know, maybe 40, 50 years old that perhaps need to be replaced. Power lines, we'd certainly go off the existing power lines and then the power company would bring a feed over to the site. And then we've already talked to them about transformers and that'd all be underground service, so there wouldn't be any more power lines in the area. I did happen to have a meeting with Burlington to Northern Santa Fe last week and I talked to them about the possibility, if we needed to do like a site observation with the Railroad Department of Roads to look at the site distances for that railroad crossing. That people seem to be concerned about is probably more of an issue for the entire region versus this subdivision, so whether one person's crossing or whatever. I guess John's last comment, I just want to clarify, talks about, the review should not be considered as a guarantee, the adequate quality for water. I believe what John's maybe saying is that he can't guarantee that the future lots would have water and not affected by these, where other lots are in place. Talked a little bit about the aquifer, you know, the difference in the layers and how they really don't mesh together. And that's all I have, unless somebody feels like I missed a question or maybe somebody had.
I have a question, base, this goes back to the runoff issue that was brought up. Do you have any idea how large of a house, or houses you're planning to put on these lots in terms of square foot, footprint?
Probably a maximum, maybe 2,000 square.
Or feet, okay.
Yeah.
On, as I recall, three to four acre lots?
Yes.
Is that the range? Okay.
The largest is about five acres and the smallest looks like about three and a half acres, so, pretty big lot for the small size of house.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
It's time to entertain a motion.
Move of approval?
Second.
Cornelius and Mr. Sunderman, second. Discussion.
I'd like to start out by thanking everyone who came to talk to us about the issues surrounding this application. The primary issue we heard about was the availability of water, particularly in northern Lancaster County. Whenever there's a new development proposed, we hear about issues with water in the area. And it is a continuing concern and we understand that, I understand that. I intend, I moved for approval and I intend to support this amendment based, or I'm sorry, this application based on the testimony that we heard indicating that the water that was present in the area was sufficient for this development. And the quality of the water was not great, but there are technologies available to make it potable. And further, that an irrigation well that could be dug today would dominate the extraction rate of these nine proposed residences. All of that said, thinking about the issues of water in northern Lancaster County and potentials for residential development in the area, at one point we heard, and I don't know, I think Lynn was on the commission at the time, the planning staff had developed a system for rating and prioritizing rural land in the county for residential development. And one of the things that was taken into account in that was the availability of water. The county board didn't feel that this was appropriate for use in determining whether or not these applications should be approved or not. But that data was at one point gathered and at least partially compiled. And we did see that in northern Lancaster County, there were issues with water. And so I would recommend that the residents of the area ask their county board representative and the board in general about that information and how that could be used in the future for helping to allocate the resources that exist. Also, our action here today, if I'm not mistaken, is not final. So there's another opportunity to address this issue of water and residential development in the county to the county board. And I would recommend that the neighbors do that if they continue to have concerns after today's testimony.
Anyone else?
I would just add a couple of comments as well. This is a tricky issue. Farming is really important in Nebraska. My husband's got a long time farming family. And I appreciate hearing from the county attorney about the water rights because that's information I did not have. And that is a factor in my decision today because it sounds like the water rights are not being violated in this case. And so I also intend to support the motion.
Anyone else?
I'm going to support the application too. I am a little troubled that the health department's analysis does not include whether a proposed subdivision may have an effect on adjoining wells. And the NRD's jurisdiction is primarily over agricultural irrigation. And right now, they're just monitoring because they're not in an area that has controls in place for irrigation wells. But I think that it is really hard to tell the connections between aquifers in different areas without somebody that's actually familiar with the soils and the particular depths at which you need to drill. And I think Mr. Mosher, even though he's probably getting paid to drill the wells, definitely had knowledge about what, where the clay levels are and what is connected to what. And in particular, the thing that turns it for me is that they could put an agricultural irrigation well in right now and more than double the amount of use that we would think that nine houses would have. And so to me, we're not, we might actually be improving the potential water situation by allowing this particular development to go through because otherwise, they could dig an irrigation well and start using it for corn and irrigation. The nine houses actually are probably going to use a lot less water than the potential uses right now. So, that's my reasoning in supporting the application. Amy?
Harris?
Yes.
Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. Seeing no one, we're going to adjourn.